We're ready.
Ready, Mayor.
Mayor Finkley, I thank you. We are here for the June 15, 2021 City Commission meeting. Obviously, we are starting early so we can have an executive session, which will last 45 minutes. And then we will leave this session, go to that executive session after a motion. And then we will reconvene here at 5:45 or as soon as we can thereafter and start the regular agenda. So I'll go ahead and take roll call real quick and then we'll take a motion and go to executive session. Vice Mayor Shipley.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Bowley.
Here.
Mayor Finkley, I'm here. Commissioner Ananda is absent this evening. I would look for a motion.
Mr. Commissioner Bowley, I move that we recess into executive session for approximately 45 minutes to discuss employer-employee negotiations pursuant to the employee-employee negotiations exception as set forth in KSA 754319B3. The justification for the executive session is to keep employer-employee negotiation matters confidential at this time. The City Commission meeting will resume in its virtual format in accordance with Resolution Number 7375 at the conclusion of the executive session.
Commissioner Lawson, second.
Mayor Finkley, I have a motion by Commissioner Bowley, a second by Commissioner Lawson. Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Aye.
Mayor Finkley, aye, passes forward to zero. We will adjourn to executive session and return shortly after 5:45.
We chat that I have an item that's gonna have to be that I'm gonna need to pull off of the consent or if he wants to it needs to be deferred. And I'll get him the item.
What have we talked to you for?
It is, um, it'll be deferred to the July meeting. It's item consent item eight, no, um, seven A.
Eight, seven?
Nope, it's seven A, sorry.
Mayor, we're back on and we were having a little audio problem, but we are almost ready.
Aaron?
You've got seven A in the chat, Porter?
Yes.
That's good.
Is YouTube gone, Kurt?
Yes, it is.
Okay, it's not showing up yet.
It shouldn't be going the whole time. Uh, 25 people have watched it. 10 people are watching right now. You can be one.
Porter, we can hear you, but...
Yeah, no, we're having, something's weird with YouTube. It's not connecting. And my internet is acting goofy. Apologies.
No, there was just a 19 call over here.
Yeah, no, we're having something's weird with YouTube. It's not connecting. And my internet is acting goofy. Apologies.
No, there was just a nineteen caller here.
There with me one minute, Mayor. Kurt, it's not showing the meeting. YouTube isn't streaming the meeting.
Okay. How did, how are ten people watching it and how did twenty-six?
Look at your, it's only showing your, it's not showing the.
It says five. Well, yeah, because we're, it's only saying no. It's going to be one to screen saver. You have to say like, yeah, it says five forty-nine thirty-nine.
Okay, okay. Apologies.
This is Courtney. I can hear the sound on the YouTube, but it's just not flipping over to the video.
Uh, Mayor, I believe we're ready.
Mayor Finkeldie, um, we are back from executive session here on June fifteenth and, um, we have nothing to report. And so we'll go ahead and start. But before we get the meeting going, we'll have Porter O'Neil, um, talk about the procedures for this evening's meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Just want to share some housekeeping items for this virtual meeting. This meeting is broad, being broadcast and recorded on the City of Lawrence YouTube channel, and it is being broadcast on channel twenty-five cable. The public chat function is disabled. All chats will go directly to me. When you are not participating in the meeting, please mute your microphone. When you are not, when you are participating in the meeting, please keep your video on. When you are not participating in the meeting, please turn your video off. You will still be able to hear the meeting. You can turn your video back on when you are participating. Turning your video off when you are not participating allows the active meeting participants to be seen on the screen. If you have any trouble, please send me a chat. The city reserves the right to mute microphones and/or turn off people's video to minimize distractions. Please remember to state your name every time you speak for the benefit of those listening remotely. And now I'll return the meeting to Mayor Finkeldie.
Mayor Finkeldie, thank you, Porter. I'll go ahead and take roll call. Vice Mayor Shipley?
Here.
Commissioner Lawson?
Here.
Commissioner Bulley?
Here.
Mayor Finkeldie here. Commissioner Hernandez is absent this evening. And so we have the procedure down pat. We'll have Sherri Redeman, our city clerk, go over the meeting procedure.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm just going to provide a few procedural reminders for the virtual meeting. Commissioners, please remember to state your name and title each time you speak. Mayor, after a motion is made and seconded, please all call on commissioners individually to provide their vote. Then announce whether the motion carried and the count of the vote. City staff, please remember to state your name and title each time you speak. When the mayor calls for public comment on an item, individuals participating via Zoom should use the raise hand function to indicate they wish to speak. The raise hand function may appear in different places on your Zoom menu, depending on the device you are using and which version of Zoom you have. Individuals will be called upon by name in the order they appear on the meeting host screen. When you are called on, please unmute and state your name, and your comments will be limited to three minutes. When the mayor calls for in-person public comment, individuals should raise their hand to indicate they wish to speak. Staff present will direct you to the podium to speak, following social distancing and safety protocols. Please state your name and, uh, before speaking, and again, comments will be limited to three minutes. Thank you.
Mayor Finkeldie, thank you, Sherri. The item B is to approve the agenda. The city commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder the agenda during the meeting. Does any commission wish to reorder the agenda? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Moved, uh, Commissioner Larson moved to approve the agenda.
Vice Mayor Shipley, second.
Mayor Finkeldie, there's a motion by Commissioner Lawson, a second by Vice Mayor Shipley. Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Aye.
Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Mayor Finkeldie, aye, passes four to zero. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and will be approved by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda. It will be considered something the public wishing to speak to an item that has been pulled off the consent agenda will be limited to three minutes for comments. Do commissioners have any items to pull off the agenda? And maybe as you think about that, Sherri, do I understand we might have one we need to pull off the agenda?
Uh, Sherri Redeman, city clerk. That's, uh, correct, Mayor. Item.
C seven A, um, needs to be deferred and to, we'll be deferring that until July. There are just some corrections we noticed that need to be made in the ordinances before we bring them back for a second reading.
Okay, any other, uh, Mayor Finkeldie, thank you, Sherri. Commissioners have any other items to pull off the consent agenda? Seeing none, um, does any member of the public wish to pull an item off the consent agenda? If so, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature, or if you're present at C hall, let Sherri know.
Uh, Mayor, no one has indicated they have an item that they wish to pull, and currently we do not have anyone attending here in the commission room.
Mayor Finkeldie, thank you, Sherri. Then I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda other than C seven A.
This is Commissioner Bulley. I move that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of item C seven A.
Commissioner Larson, second.
Mayor Finkeldie, there's a motion by Commissioner Bulley, a second by Commissioner Lawson. Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Aye.
Mayor Finkeldie, aye, passes four to zero. And then Sherri, do we need a motion to defer item seven A? I assume we do.
Um, no, we're just, um, we're just pulling that item. So, and that's included in there. I said except, I'll include that in the motion that we approved it except for that item. So. It'll, and then we'll just place it on the next agenda.
Mayor Finkeldie, thank you for that clarification. That works for me. Okay, we now move to, um, public comment. The public is allowed to speak on items or issues that are not scheduled for discussion on the agenda. As a general practice, the commission will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Individuals should address all comments and questions to the commission. Each person will be limited to three minutes. If any member of the public would like to make general public comment about an item not on the agenda, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature, and Sherri will call upon you.
There's no general public comment, Mayor.
Mayor Finkeldie, thank you. They must all be waiting till we're back in post in, in July or something, but we'll take it, um, for this evening. So that moves us to regular agenda. Item number one, which is to receive the government task force report. And John, are you going to give the, the presentation?
Yes, I am.
You're looking a little older than you did in your picture in the paper this morning.
You know, I was, this is John now, Bandian. I, you know, I'm a little concerned that I grew that old so fast. And I mean, maybe it's just to like, it's not on my DNA. It must be like an andromeda strain or something.
Well, Mayor Finkeldie, we appreciate you being here, John, and we look forward to your report. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, commissioners. Um, I would first off, I would like to, um, I'd like to thank the task force members. Um, I think the, uh, and thank the, the commission for, for those that you appointed. Um, we're, I think, a very thoughtful group. I appreciate that very much. And, um, and while we had differences, uh, we were very collaborative, very, very civil, and I think a productive, productive group. Um, I, I'm not sure that every single member of the task force was present. Uh, when we voted to approve, uh, the recommendations, I believe they all were, except one. Um, stumbling bear was not there, uh, but it was a unanimous, it was unanimous, um, recommendations. So, um, let me go through, um, through what we are recommending, uh, for you. First of all, um, the resolution, just to let people know what we were, what we were working on. Um, the commission, uh, created the task force to conduct a review, comprehensive review of, one, how to elect the nonpartisan mayor. Two, at-large or district nonpartisan representation of commissioners, including the number of commissioners. Terms in office of the commissioners and the mayor, and other items that had, uh, would come up in reference, uh, in reference to these. As part of the framework, uh, that we were operating under, the resolution stated that, uh, we were modifying the form of government, not involved in changing the form of government. So that we have, we operate, and we have since nineteen fifty-one, uh, we've been operating under a commission form of government, which is more generally known throughout the country as council manager form, form of government. So excuse me if I use that term from time, from time to time. But, um, as stated in the resolution, the constraints or the framework was that, um, the form of government uh, that we are operating within places governing authority and the collective leadership of the commission. A mayor who may be elected at large by residents is a member of the governing body. That's a key, for us, that was a key point. Uh, when we were considering, we also looked at roles and responsibilities of the mayor, and we were very cognizant of, um, of, 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 of looking at the mayor as a member of the council. The second piece of the framework was the idea that the governing body at, as a governing body appoints the, um, a city manager. And that the city manager reports and serves at the pleasure of the governing body, not, uh, as any single, at, uh, any single member like the mayor uh, of the governing body. So those were, those were the constraints. Um, we, uh, or the framework, we, we were also very cognizant of, um, of some guidance that the city manager, uh, gave us, that, uh, he cautioned us to, um, not think, as we think of the mayor as a member of the governing body, um, we might increase the focus on the mayor's role, but we did not want to do that at the expense of the power or formal authority of the commissioners, uh, themselves. So we were very conscious of that because Craig said that he believed that the, um, communication between the commissioners and, uh, the staff was, um, was on a positive, a positive plane. And, uh, he was concerned about us making sure we did not, uh, increase the powers of suggest increase powers of the mayors that might, that might affect that. So our recommendations, let me, uh, two, two major recommendations. We are recommending the direct election of a nonpartisan mayor to a four-year term. The mayor would be elected then by the City of Lawrence voters at large. So there would be a election for a mayor. And candidates would run for the office of mayor. We are also recommending the creation of six districts, uh, as opposed to the at-large, um, representation that we have, uh, today. The six nonpartisan commissioners would be elected by their district in staggered four-year terms. So every two years, three of, uh, three of the commissioners would be, um, um, those, uh, district, uh, posts would be up for, up for election. We, um, while we each had our opinion, uh, opinions, um, none were, I would say, um, really very strongly held. Um, we, we searched out information, uh, from, um, a review of academic research on the topics. Uh, one of our, one of our commissioner, uh, commissioners, one of our task force members, Bonnie Johnson, uh, in two of her classes previously had looked at, uh, mayoral and, and ways of electing. And so, uh, we had her guidance on what the students had, uh, discovered in the research that they, that they, um, that they conducted. We had correspondence with two nationally recognized local government, uh, scholars. Uh, we were able to review salient sections of the National Civic League's Model Cities Charter. Uh, that charter is up for, is presently being reviewed for revision. Uh, it's coincidental that, uh, I was appointed, uh, as to the, uh, steering committee looking into that, uh, revision. And also to the subcommittee on, uh, the mayors, uh, how the mayor would be elected, roles, responsibilities. So I was fortunate to have access to that, uh, conversation. We also, um, we also engaged in correspondence. Uh, I had correspondence with city management professionals nationally from jurisdictions who had directly elected mayors. So we wanted to see what their experiences were, and we also reviewed, um, the census, census data that was available to us when we were looking at districts versus at-large and the logic. We, uh, from time to time, early in our meetings, we, uh, posed, uh, task force members posed the question, what problems are we trying to solve here? And, um, we didn't really think of our task as trying to solve, uh, existing problems. You didn't, that was not, uh, present in the charge that you gave us. Um, and so we tried to think of criteria we could use to evaluate and look at the questions uh, that you, you posed. Uh, both, uh, task force member Eileen Horn and Burdette Loomis came up with a series of questions. And we refer to those as the values lens that we would look through as we, um, made and considered our recommendations. So we looked at the recommendations then and asked ourselves the following questions. Do they provide fair represent, are we providing fair recommend resume, representation for our residents? Would our recommendations increase voter engagement? Um, would we recognize the importance of diversity, equity, and inclusion? Ensuring that we hear from voices traditionally left out of our government structures and processes? Would our recommendations encourage more civil discourse as a community? Would they produce results that are widely accepted in the community? And importantly, would they produce results that will lead to effective policymaking and implementation? This values lens was particularly important to us in our discussions of district versus at-large, uh, representation. So it did not, in relative short order, and after a useful set of discussions, the task force agreed to recommend the directly elected mayor who would be somewhat more influential than the current mayoral, the current practice encourages. Just, we thought that the direct election of the mayor would raise resident expectations about the mayor's role and that, um, there would be a natural proclivity to, uh, look at those expectations and to try to meet those expectations within the form. expectations and to try to meet those expectations within the formal constraints of the mayor's, of the mayor's role. So we thought of, as we looked at the increased focus on the mayor's role, we thought of the, we, we, we thought of the role as a facilitative mayor. So the mayor's was primarily to facilitate a focus on, on issues that had come up in, in the various campaigns, to provide continuity in a four, with a four-year, with a four-year term, and to appoint with the consent of the commissioners, representatives to the boards, to represent the community in interjurisdictional and, and, and important ceremonial, some more ceremonial events, and importantly, to annually make a state of the city, city address. The task force, task force members agreed that the, the one-year terms that we have now, is, there's a lack of continuity. Not to say that it is not working, but there is not the continuity that we would have with a four-year mayor who was directly elected by the residents. In addition, we noted that some 70% of council manager cities have adopted a direct election of the mayor. And in addition, the proposed revision in the National Civic League's Model City Charter will advocate for a directly elected, elected mayor. We also noted that we, we thought, although we did not know this for sure, but we thought that the present method of selecting the mayor goes back to the original adoption of the commission mayor form, 1951. I don't really, I don't believe there have been modifications to the form since then. So in addition, we looked at, even though it was not a formal part of our charge, we looked at some roles and responsibilities of the mayor. We can, we can, excuse me, those are in the report that is accessible to residents. I would like to bring attention, however, to a couple of points that we looked at. We were, as we were looking at the role of the mayor, we noted that in some jurisdictions, we learned this from our correspondence with the city managers who had, who were working in, in council manager cities, that some of those mayors would only vote in case of a tie, and in other cases, the mayor had veto power. We looked at both of those, both of those roles of the mayor, and we rejected them in large measure because we thought that they ran counter to the idea that the mayor is a member of the governing body. Furthermore, a task member, Eileen Horn, she pointed out that what we want and what residents want is, they want to know where the mayor stands on each issue that comes before the commission. And if the mayor doesn't vote on those issues, you may not really, really know that. So, so then we moved on to the question of, of district versus at-large, or maybe, maybe a hybrid. We ended up talking about, or endorsing, six commissioners elected, elected at large, plus then the mayor who would be elected at large. So it would increase the membership of the governing body to seven, as opposed to the five that we, we have, we have now. We did some research on this subject. I read some articles, some academic articles on the subject. There is very little on the subject of district versus at-large that has been written, even in the last 20 years. There's some, but not much. And the, the, the benefits, cost benefits, there, the, the results are equivocal. The, the only thing that really stands out is that districts are more appropriate and more successful in bringing voice to the under, under representative, represented if those, that portion of the population is clustered, in a particular, is of enough magnitude, enough size, so that they can be identifiable, and if they are clustered. And in that case, it was clear that districts provided more representation. We go back, however, then, we go back to the impetus for districts because it also, I should point out, that a majority, over a majority of council manager cities in the United States, elect their representatives at large. So we are not an outlier here in elected our members, our members at large. But what, what, we looked at some census data, and we also were able, I asked for the city to draw a map of, of the residences of the commissioners over the past 10 years. And that was quite interesting because you all were spread out, spread pretty much, I mean, pretty, I mean, clustered, clustered is probably too strong a word, but kind of in a circle with the downtown as a, or a little west of downtown as the, as the center point, although we did not see much representation from the east, the east side. However, when we looked at the census data, we found two things. First of all, our minority population is relatively small. So it's about 20%. The challenge even, and that minority population is divided among several different, several different ethnic or racial, racial groups. So for example, African-American is not the majority of, there is no majority among the minority, the minority population. And I actually believe that the Asian population is the greatest of the minority. Now, obviously, some of this has to do with, with campus and with Haskell, but that gets complicated, complicated as well. In addition, we looked at, we were able to look at income levels and to see whether income levels were clustered in certain parts of town. And what was interesting to me when I did that, looked at that, is that I looked first at Overland Park, Lenexa, Shawnee, and Olathe. And they each were very similar in 5% poverty rate, and poverty rate is defined in the census. And then I looked at Lawrence, and it was 20%. And I go, something doesn't compute here. And so then I looked at Manhattan, and then Kansas, and I also looked at Iowa City, university towns, and guess what? 20% poverty in both of those. So I started to do some research on, in the census, how the census calculated this, that. And they have a whole complete section on how they calculate, how they try to calculate income in university, in university cities. I was so surprised, so surprised to see that. So given this, why did we, we, we needed, we, 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 we looked through the values lens, and we still came up with the suggestion of, of districts. And let me suggest to you why, why we did that. We, we thought that if we had six districts, there would be about 16,000 or so residents in each district. We thought that that was a manageable number that could accomplish the following. It would allow citizens a direct point of contact with the commission. The costs and barriers to running for election in district would be lower than mounting a full-city campaign. This might encourage a wider range of candidates to seek office. And we thought that it would produce more candidate engagement with the district because the, the fewer residents that you would be relating to, and possibly, and hopefully, more resident engagement in city governments. In addition, we considered that districts could enhance a sense of place and attachment for residents, increasing quality of life. The downside theoretically of districts is the potential for parochial thinking. So district, you know, focus on, focus on districts. But I made a list of the issues that the city has faced over in the recent past, and I also asked the mayor for some ideas of what the issues were. And you will know that the very, very significant majority of those issues are, are community-wide. So they don't, they don't, they, they're not isolated in large measure to a particular, a particular section or district, district in town. So we thought, and given the sort of the, the community and, and sense of community here, that district representatives were unlikely to abandon their commitment, their sort of, their trustee role, looking at the city, looking at the city as, as a whole. So in sum, I would, I just repeat, and then if you have some questions, we can, we can go for that, that the mayor, we suggested a mayor directly elected to a four-year term, six commissioners elected by district, staggered four-year terms. We rejected, by the way, the hybrid where we would have two at-large and four districts because we thought the districts would be roughly 25,000 people each, and we thought that was too many. And then to have more, like, say, six districts and two at-large, and that would be a nine-member governing body, and we saw the city manager winced at that suggestion, considering the communication he likes to develop with the other council managers. So we backed away from, we backed away from that. So I know we did not, I will also add, it's a last finishing up, that we did not explicitly seek resident input and feedback on the proposals. We thought that you had appointed a fairly representative group in, of the community, and we were fairly certain that, that a systematic form of getting feedback on these, on these recommendations is advisable, and that should come from the, the city commission rather than the task force itself. So that is the presentation.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you, John. Thank you for that report. Thank you for the work of the committee. Thank you for your leadership. You know, as we, as we lead into questions on your last point there, I would say, and you know, I think as we start talking about this issue, it is so broad and so big, that if you just would have asked the public, what do you want to do about the form of government, you'd get, you know, little to no response, or, or, or you'd be all over the board. And I think by having this recommendation, having your thoughtful report, I think that focuses the discussion, and certainly I think we will have some discussion on it, obviously in the community. But, but this is very helpful to get us focused in on something for people to react to and, and understand. So I appreciate that. Okay, questions?
This is also, this is John Abendian. I also think, Mayor, that that is an opportunity for people to learn more about the purpose of the council manager form as opposed to mayor council form.
Mayor Finkel, that good point. Commissioners, do you have questions for John at this point? While we're thinking of questions, I don't know if Tony or Craig, did you want to talk at all about process or procedure, about where we might go from here? I didn't, didn't know if you wanted to do that now, or let us have that discussion?
City Manager Craig Owens, I think, I know Tony Wheeler has kind of outlined some of those next steps from a, a process standpoint. Be happy to yield to her.
Tony Wheeler, City Attorney. Yes, Porter Arneal did put together a public engagement plan that he is available to go into greater depth with all of you, if, if you wish to have that. But, you know, we thought that the commission could, could give us some reactions to, to the recommendations of the task force this evening, and then give some, give the staff some direction on the scope of the public engagement, and maybe a timeline for bringing back the public's comments to the commission.
Mayor Finkel, I, and in the event we wanted to put this on the November ballot, is September 1st, when, by then, we'd have to make a decision, correct?
Yes, the ballot, excuse me, Tony Wheeler, City Attorney, the ballot language would have to be finalized into the county clerk by September 1st, at the very latest, so that he can prepare the ballots and get them shipped to military people overseas, et cetera. So yes, September 1st would be the deadline for finalizing the ballot language. We, if we wish to put this on an, on the election, the commission would need to establish or pass a resolution with the ballot language contained in it. That resolution could have additional information beyond the very limited question that would be posed to the voters. And I would note that the, the statutes do provide guidance on what the ballot language should contain specifically, so.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you for that outline. Questions from commissioners on, for John, or on the process, and before we open it to public comment and then have discussion?
Mayor, sorry, Vice Mayor Shipley, something I, someone else had once mentioned, maybe in you, I'm not sure. There would be a possibility, for example, we did public engagement, and overwhelmingly everyone wanted directly elected mayor, but overwhelmingly, nobody was interested in districts. We could skip the ballot language and, based on the mountain of engagement we get from the community, simply make those changes administratively. Is that a possibility?
Mayor Finkel, I think that's a question for Tony about, possibly by charter ordinance?
By having a directly elected mayor, you are modifying our current form of government because we're setting up a new way for electing that mayor. There would be the possibility of doing There would be the possibility of doing, doing that by charter ordinance rather than submitting it to a ballot because our analysis of the statutes is that those particular statutes are non-uniform and do provide an opportunity for a city to charter out of them. However, as you know, there is a certain procedure that has to be followed with charter ordinances and they are subject to protest petition. So if a petition, a valid petition is circulated and meets the requirements, it could be placed on the ballot at the request of the, the people petitioning for it.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you. Other questions before I open it to public comment and then bring it back for discussion? Seeing none, this is a public hearing item. And female of the public would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature. And Sherry will call upon you. You'll have three minutes.
Chris Flowers.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers and I have a few questions. First is, when will we know the census data? I said that the, we need to, what, finalize the language by September 1st? But will we know where, what our census data is to be making the districts by September 1st? Another question, okay. Did the task force specifically look at the effects on renters? I know they did for race and economic status, but I don't think they did for renters. And I, I don't think going to just districts is good for renters. Like, cause it taught, you talk about the, the benefits of having a more personal relationship with your district, but what percentage of Lawrence is going to live in the same district four years from now that, than they do right now? We have a lot of renters. I think it's, it's bad. I think districts are bad for renters because if you're con, if you move a lot, you're going to have a different district member and it's just going to create more confusion. Cause right now, if I move somewhere else, my commissioners are all still the same people. So I, I don't, I would like you to ask them if they, maybe I, maybe I'm wrong and they did look at it, but did they actually, how much did they look at the effects of all this when it comes to renters? And then also, one of the reasons I heard that they were against at-large, like an at-large hybrid is because it would create confusion for what district commissioners did. That, that would create like the illusion that, that the district commissioners are only doing district stuff and not voting on like citywide stuff. But I would ask, how, how would, how would that create like confusion? Like how are, how would that, we expect the public to vote on a directly elected mayor and know what the mayor's like responsibilities are? And that is, that is just one, one-fifth or one-seventh of a vote. Like, we're expecting them to know what a mayor does and that it's not a strong mayor. So if we can't expect them to know that, how come we can't expect district voters to know that a district commissioner votes on the citywide? And I think the reason is that this task force, that was already people on that, there was no one there that didn't want change. Like, there were neutral people and there were people who wanted a directly elected mayor. So I don't think, if you have neutral and let's go for a strong, like a directly elected mayor, I don't think there was anyone fighting for things to stay the same. So that's another thing I can think of. Also, can someone who doesn't live in a district, that's a, I sent that in. I think that's something that should be looked at. Just cause like, what if, okay, thank you.
Three minutes. And we did get your letters, of course.
Yeah, so just whatever that said, thank you.
If there's anyone else who would like to provide comment on this item, please turn on your video or you can raise your hand. This is Sherry Reedham, City Clerk. That's all the public comment on this item, Mayor.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you, Sherry. Bring it back to the commission and two questions kind of follow up on what Chris said. Tony, maybe the first one's for you, although I know it'll be helpful to maybe draw some maps. Would we have to have the exact districts done? Would those be included in the ballot language?
City Attorney Tony Wheeler, currently under the statutes, the only thing that is required in the ballot language is the, the terms of office for the governing body and the membership. So the number of potential commissioners and then the terms of office. So in answer to that question, no, the ballot, the districts would not have to be drawn before the matter is placed to the voters.
This is John Nalbandian. Mayor, the, you would have to, as Tony said, you don't have to draw the districts before the, before the vote, but it is the responsibility of the city commission to draw the districts. There are legal requirements for how a district should be drawn. And so it's not, it's not a haphazard, haphazard process.
Mayor Finkel, yes, I certainly appreciate that and I know that'd be a, a big process and certainly has in other senses. John, I guess the other question is for you. Can you discuss a little bit about, if there was discussions about renters versus homeowners and how this might affect renters?
Yeah, we didn't really, we, we heard, Chris brought that up at one of our meetings. Oh, this is John Nalbandian. Chris brought that up at one of our meetings, but it didn't, it didn't really resonate with us that much. We didn't spend much time on it at all. And so, you know, I mean, given that we've had at-large elections, I don't even know if we've had many people running for office who, who, who rent. We probably have some, but, oh yeah, yeah. But I don't think over time that we've had a great, a great number. If we did, then it would be a matter of concern.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you. Commissioners, thoughts?
Mayor Shipley, just to respond on that and then launch into all the other things. At least two commissioners that in the last two commissions have been renters. One of them moved twice during the time that they were on the commission. One of them has moved three times since they've been on the commission. One comment that was made by a member of the committee was that some people move just to get into districts, so it's not that big of a deal. I was a little uncomfortable with that response. It betrayed a kind of privilege that I wasn't comfortable with indeed. We have also had commissioners that moved to districts so they could run for county or representative. But again, that is a privilege for people who are wealthy enough to do that. So I just, I just wanted to make those couple of statements about that.
Mayor Finkel, I, you have other statements you want to make since you're on the roll or you can jump in?
If I'm honest, I mean, I have all kinds of thoughts and I have personally called just about everyone I could think of, probably 30 people that I've harassed about their opinion on this. And I don't, I still don't want to commit to anything. What I will say is the people I've spoken to are overwhelmingly uncomfortable with the districting idea. Either they don't see the benefit in the way the Lawrence population is scattered or it, we're just not ready for it. Like maybe in, in five years, maybe in 10 years, we might be ready for that. But right now, they don't feel like, ready for that. And I also pulled my own research. I pulled my own studies and, and there's a lot in there in addition to what Professor Nalbandian has discussed with, some of them say 15% population. But I really just want to hear more from the public. So if I can, I mean, I could blather on about some of my questions and ideas, but I'd really like to hear more public engagement before I make up my mind. I really want to hear more from, you know, if it hadn't been for COVID, to me, this would have, these meetings would have drawn 20 or 30 people at every meeting and we would have really had some robust discussion. And that isn't, that didn't happen the way I, I would have expected it to. So I, I am loath to make up my mind about something until I hear a lot more from the public.
Mayor Finkel, I, and yeah, I don't think, I mean, again, my, I think the recommendation and otherwise is not to make up our mind tonight, but to get that, that input. You know, I would add that, you know, I've talked to quite a few people about it. And again, as I said earlier, I appreciate, I mean, obviously we put this commission together to pu, put forward their idea and I think it has, how, how it does, has spurred conversation, right? I mean, until we had that, the conversation was, was pretty light. And I still talk to quite a few people who frankly don't know how we elect the mayor and even now. And they also don't know the length of terms and they don't have a strong feeling one way or the other. They just don't know. So I think there's a lot of education to, to go on and a lot of feedback to get. And I think eventually, if the ultimate outcome is putting something on the ballot, of course, we will find out what the public thinks at that point as well. So, I mean, I think it's really generated the kind of discussion we wanted. Commissioner Larson?
Yeah, Commissioner Larson here. First of all, Mr. Nalbandian, I want to thank you and the task force for all the work that you did. I know you were kind of under the gun time-wise and you basically started with nothing. And it took quite a bit of research and discussion amongst the group. I did get a chance to watch some of those meetings and I really appreciate it. You know, I, I think basically where we're at is the point of it's time to get public engagement on this. And if there's any controversy, sounds like there might be controversy about the district aspect of, that may be all the more reason to put it to ballot is if there's, there's not a clear-cut idea that folks like, like or know about. So, and also like John's idea that the, the having public engagement is a good opportunity to educate, to, to provide education to the community about where we were government-wise and where, where, what are the options moving forward. So I'm at this point just ready to go forward with public engagement and go from there.
Mayor Finkel, I, I did want to ask one other question that Chris had brought up. John, I know, I think you guys talked about a little bit at one of the meetings I watched, but the question was, can someone, do you have to live in the district in which you, which you serve? Do you have to live there? Is that a requirement?
It's, that's kind of interesting. I mean, there, it's, it would be very unusual to not live in the district. However, I know I was very surprised years ago when I went to Tucson. I was doing some work in Tucson and sure enough, they had, anyone could run for any district, but they had to be elected by the district, by the district and residents. And it could also work the other way. I mean, you, you could, you could have districts where a person had to live in the district. It would represent the district but would be elected at large. I mean, it can get very complicated. There are no, there, there really are no rights and wrongs here. It's, it's a matter of how do you and what's the probability of certain consequences occurring depending upon the choices that you make? And weighing those consequences then.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you for that and I agree. I mean, as, as you talk about all the different options and look at different cities, you know, there's clearly not a right answer. It's a, you know, what's the right, what's the answer for Lawrence and what's the best answer? And there's going to be pluses and minuses. There's going to be people elected or not elected or people run or not run. And, 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 you know, it'll be hard to know, but certainly you're trying to come up with the best answer possible. And again, that's why I think we need public comment and public input to see if, see what folks in the city think about that and then eventually possibly putting, putting that on the ballot. So I guess the question for the commission is, well, what, I mean, is, is there some, some direction to give to Porter and his staff about input? Are there things we want to take off the table? Anything we want to put on the table? Any direction we can give them?
May I weigh in here, this John Nalbandian? Whatever you do, it would be very beneficial if it were a systematic gathering of information. So, you know, you would have, is almost like a, a resident survey, you know? That was, that was carefully constructed so that you would get representatives from all over. You know, all that kind of stuff that you would do when you do a, you know, a citizen survey.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you. Courtney, Vice Mayor Shipley?
Yeah, one thing that I, there were, even though the vote was unanimous, there were a few people who were a little uncomfortable that there wasn't more discussion about a hybrid, what they were calling hybrid. And the more people I spoke to in the public about this, and some of them had lived in other places that had this, there was one thing they didn't really talk about. So if we have six districts and one mayor, if you, you may feel personally represented because you know who your representative of your district is, but you really only can efficaciously lobby two people. The way we're set up now, one who, for example, wants a certain kind of concrete bricks in their park, they can approach all five of us to get three of us to agree with them. The way they have set it up, they didn't really discuss, well, how does a member of the public manage to get a majority? So if I live on, in, if I represent East Lawrence, you're in West Lawrence, you know, how efficacious is it for you to approach me on the other side of town and ask for something? Cause those two votes just won't add up. So I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, again, they, the group didn't discuss that and I hate to put Mr. Nalbandian on the spot or if there's some other members here, I think I see if they had any thoughts about that.
This is John Nalbandian. We did talk about a hybrid model. And again, I, I, I'm sensitive to the size of the governing body and the idea of the relationship between the staff and the governing body being influenced by the number of members of the governing body. The larger the governing body, the less likely it is, I mean, the less communication you're going to have one-on-one with, with the staff. And it would require more, more coordination. So that's why we thought, we did entertain the possibility of four districts and two at-large. But we thought it really defeats the purpose of districts because they would be so large.
Mayor Finkel, I, and Vice Mayor Shipley, I guess my response to that is, you know, when you start talking about efficacious, you know, lobbying, when somebody is one person out of 100,000 who could possibly vote for you as opposed to one person out of 16,000, you know, you, in many other topics, the effect, you know, the efficacy of that and having that one representative, putting aside your example, but let's say it's a citywide issue of, of some import. Now where is you, where are you more effective? Are you more effective talking to somebody about, you know, pay issues for the city employees that's across the board? Are you more, do you have more effect? pay issues for the city employees that's across the board? Are you more, do you have more effec- you know, efficacious lobbying when you're one of 16,000 versus one of 100,000? So yes, you gain some, you lose some. Um, and so I think that's where the, where the trade-off is. At least that's my two cents.
This is John Nalbandian again. Also, uh, to consider this too, um, you know, if you increase, with every increase in the size of the governing body, you're incre- potentially, Tony has to weigh in here, you're potentially increasing the number of commissioners who can meet uh, in private.
City Attorney Tony Wheeler, that's correct. The quorum is based on the total number of commissioners that make up the, the body.
Commissioner Larson, would that include the mayor then, if we went to elected mayor and six commissioners? So there'll be seven?
City Attorney Tony Wheeler, yes, um, that, that would include the, the mayor, if the mayor is a full member of the governing body.
Mayor Finkel, I, maybe, maybe I can ask Porter here, is, is there some direction, or, I mean, we want to send you off to do um, public engagement in a systematic and comprehensive way in a very short amount of time. Okay, other than that, um, can we give you some direction or the specific questions we could help you with before we send you off that way?
This is Porter O'Neil, Director of Communications and Creative Sources.
Um, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. I think I have a pretty good sense of, of what we're talking about. I really appreciate Dr. Nalbandian's suggestion, and based on what we've drafted in the agenda, I'm running this through the Community Engagement Group already, I feel like we're on the right track, um, that it is a two-step process, that we definitely want to educate the community and inform the community first. Um, hopefully, some of these task mem- task force members would be willing to assist us with that. Obviously, they have the most direct um, experience with this, and I appreciate hearing Dr. Nalbandian's perspective tonight. And then, community consultation to gather input. I guess one question we have would be, just for some clarity, um, do we want to revisit everything that the task force looked at, so to speak? Or are we really gearing this more to get clarity on what exactly should be on the ballot, if that's the direction that you choose? So a little more clarity on that would be helpful.
Mayor Finkel, I, I guess I'm clarifying what you're asking there, um, as opposed to just opening it up. I mean, I guess what I think you're asking is, I don't think we should open it up and say, tell us what you think about the form of government. I mean, I, I think we have a recommendation, um, and I think we want to, to focus our um, feedback on those particular parts, including the directly elected mayor, you know, the six commissioners plus one, and then the precincts. I mean, obviously, I think hybrid could be put in there as part of the precinct discussion, but it seemed to me those would be the full major areas to focus on, but I'd look to the other commissioners to correct me or disagree.
Commissioner Larson, I don't disagree with you. Mayor, um, Porter, I did have a question, just for clarification. Did you say that you wanted some um, guidance on ballot language? Is that what you were saying?
No, not guidance, obviously, that's not under our responsibility, but just, just to make-
That we understand what it is we're seeking on your behalf, and I appreciate what Mayor Finkel just described, because that helps me understand that we are taking what the task force has given, um, and responding to that, so to speak, in their recommendations, so I appreciate that. I wanted to make sure that you didn't want more information about public um, input related to ballot language, but it sounds like this really would help you all inform um, any decision you make as to what the ballot language would be.
Thank you. Commissioner Larson, thank you.
Thank you.
This is Sheri Green, a city clerk. So Mayor, just so I'm clear, um, just on that-
I just would like to hear from the other commissioners that that's kind of the direction, at least from a majority of you.
Commissioner Larson, I agree with the mayor on, on the options we should go with, sticking with the govern- the task force recommendations, and go from there.
Yes, Commissioner Bowley, I concur.
Vice Mayor Shipley, any?
Uh, yeah, I, I would hate to um, ask people to relitigate what they've already discussed, especially considering um, how talented they were and, and how great they were um, in their discourse. Um, but that being said, I do see a situation where the public might like districts and not directly elected mayor or directly, so I just want that to be fluid from our perspective, that one thing my, people might really like and be popular, and I would be afraid to put them both on a ballot language, and, and then that kill both of them. So I, I guess that's the only caveat I would.
Mayor Finkel, I, no, I, I mean, I do think we will, I mean, the, the ultimate, I mean, the outcome of the public engagement process will be for the five of us to decide what to put on the ballot. Um, and so, yeah, that, that's still an open question. I mean, obviously, one possibility is to put exactly what was recommended to us on the ballot, but other options could avail themselves, um, or, you know, certainly, or as discussed, you know, possibly uh, multiple ways to get there, or even, you know, in, in theory, multiple elections.
Commissioner Larson, I would, I would, um, I guess maybe assume is the right word to use, or not a good word to use, that these would be separate issues on a ballot, if they were both to appear on a ballot, that they would be separate votes.
Mayor Finkel, I, that's a question for Tony. Um, do you think we could have two different issues on the ballot?
City Attorney Tony Wheeler, when you're changing, when you're modifying the form of government, you have to provide clarity to the voters on what they are voting. So you wouldn't want to set up a situation where they could vote for one form of government in, in two different questions. Um, so, you know, I may, I, I, I'd like to do a little bit more research on that, but I believe that when it goes to the ballot, you have to have one particular proposal for the modified form that you want to go to, rather than giving them a menu of options, because it could create a situation um, where the, where the, the whole doesn't line up, you know, as, as anticipated. So um, I appreciate these comments tonight. Randy and I, and, and Marie in our office, will, will work to um, further refine the answer to that question, but um, that's my initial impression.
Mayor Finkel, I, just thinking out loud, though, in theory, again, we're a long way from getting here, but you know, and I think one of the ideas was we'd have this on the ballot in November, you know, effective two years later, but in theory, could you have the precincts, for example, or directly elected mayor, pick one of the two topics in this November's election, and then August of the following year? Have a different, I mean, have a, an addition to that? You see what I'm saying? Does that make any sense?
City Attorney Tony Wheeler, could you, could you restate that for me, please?
Well, again, I, it, it probably doesn't do us any good to shoot from the hip here, but I guess I was just thinking you could, in theory, um, have a form of government that, um, a vote to have a directly elected mayor in November, and then, assuming that passes, the following August, have one that put the precincts on and a directly elected mayor. If it failed, you'd still have the directly elected mayor. If it passed, you would have, and you would still have time before the next election. But again, I'm shooting from the hip. Don't, you don't feel like after answering that now, Tony?
City Attorney Tony Wheeler, um, thank you very much for um, being patient and giving us the opportunity to research things further. I do know that the statute does state very clearly that, um, if you um, move, if you place a measure on the ballot for the voters to decide, and a decision is made to change the form of government, then you cannot place on the ballot until four years have passed, until the, the new government has been in place for four years, before you can modify it a second time. So, um, you know, that is, we'll have to comply with that provision of the state statutes in formulating um, options or alternatives to consider.
Mayor Finkel, I, well, I think that answers that question, that shooting from the hip doesn't always work very well, but, okay, well, that's good. We'll have these options um, before us, so, thank you for that.
This is Commissioner Bowley. Um, it's my understanding that a change of government um, ballot has to be on a general election. Is that correct?
City Attorney Tony Wheeler, the stat- the statute says that it may be on um, any election, but the changes are not effective until the next city election. So conceivably, um, the questions could be placed on this November 2021 general election ballot, or it could be placed on the uh, primary or general election of 2022. But whatever is decided, the changes would not take effect until the next city election of 2020, um, 2023 would be the soonest.
Commissioner Bowley, thank you, Tony. I appreciate that information, and I'd like to also take this opportunity to second the uh, thanks to Professor Nalbandian and to the, to the task force. I really appreciate, you know, the diligence and the creativity that you all have, have put forward, and just say thank you so much.
Mayor Finkel, I, yes, thank you, John. Sheri, Porter, do you have all you need from us to proceed?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, this does raise another question. Um, it will help us, timing-wise-
Understand how quickly we need to move and how much time we have. So I understand that you may not be able to answer this directly, but um, a sense from you all is to, do we want this wrapped up well before the September 1st date um, to submit the ballot language, or, you know, is some sense of, is this urgent, or is this going to be over a year's time, if that makes sense?
Mayor Finkel, I, I guess, yeah, that's a good question we should weigh in on. I guess my hope would be that we would, um, you know, see what kind of information we could gather in time to put it on, as a possibility, to put it on the agenda. So I, I would like to see you work under that. Now, we might get to that point and decide, despite our valiant efforts, we haven't gathered the input we need, and then we, um, you know, give you more time, or we decide to go in a different direction. But, I mean, I'd like to leave that poss- personally, I'd like to leave that possib- possibility on the table of having something on the ballot in November, so that would make you work pretty quickly, but I'd be interested in that if possible. But other commissioners?
As Commissioner Bowley, I think Tony's pointed out that there are three possible elections that we could utilize for this purpose before, then, that effective date would, for all of them, would be the next city election in 2023. So, you know, unless we're able to get robust engagement on this very quickly, it might be a good idea to uh, defer to the primary in August next year, or the general, because it would have the same effective date.
Commissioner Larson, um, yeah, I would be a little bit concerned about pushing the public engagement, community engagement, too quickly, um, because that's one thing that we heard some concerns about on some of our recent studies that have been done. Uh, we want to make sure that we give the public an opportunity to, to truly understand, learn about this, and um, make comments and suggestions, um, you know, that we can put forth and use at some point.
Um, Mayor, Vice Mayor Shipley, um, well, I'm, I always want to hear from the most people I humanly can, um, I think our original goal was to push it this way towards November, um, but, you know, owing towards COVID and all kinds of, of extenuating circumstances, I, I would be happy to pump the brakes here with my fellow commissioners.
Mayor Finkel, I, I certainly don't object to public, more public engagement. I guess the only thing I would caveat that is, you know, I think we have some momentum now. I would hate to say, oh, we have until next August, let's, you know, let's, I mean, I think we want to capitalize on the, on the momentum we have and gather the input, you know, in an expeditious manner, um, and then, again, if it ends up being on the ballot later, so be it, um, but I think, let's, let's capture the momentum. As Vice Mayor Shipley said, lots of people are talking about this at the moment, and they weren't talking about it before, so this is the time to engage them. Porter, does that help give you direction?
Yes, Mayor.
They're nicer to you than I am, so that's, that's good.
That's very helpful, and, and I, I agree. I think that allows us to get more robust information back to you all by not rushing for this, um, this current election, so, thank you.
Mayor Finkel, I, okay, thank you all. Um, usually we take a break after about two hours, and that's usually about 7:45, but the commissioners have been going since five o'clock, since we had an executive session, so we're going to go ahead and take a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back to Commission Item, um, Regurgitating Item Number Two. So 10 minutes, be back at 7:15. And then we'll come back to commission item, um, regular agenda item number two. So 10 minutes, be back at seven fifteen. Well, we are now ready for, ready for regular agenda item number two, which is, um, consider text amendment related to regulation of alcohol sales. Kyle, do you have this one?
I do indeed. Thank you very much. Kyle Kobe Planner. Um, so, uh, this is for a text amendment twenty-one zero 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 nine four. Um, on May nineteenth, twenty twenty, City Commission adopted temporary resolution seventy-three twenty-three. That resolution, which is included in your packet, adopted on a temporary basis the changes that are before you tonight. The resolution cites both the coronavirus pandemic as well as challenges posed to businesses by internet sales and regional competition as reasons for its adoption. The resolution is set to expire on June thirtieth. The text amendment before you proposes the formal adoption of these temporary changes. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit distracted. There's a, I have a four-legged, uh, creature that's right here that are not behaving properly. Um, there are two main components to the proposed text amendment. The first has to do with alcohol sales regulations downtown and the other pertains to accessory bar and accessory restaurant uses more broadly. Currently, the land development code requires that any business located in the CD downtown commercial district, which sells alcohol to derive no less than fifty-five percent of its total sales from food. The proposed change would flip that requirement to instead require that any business who's, which sells alcohol to derive no more than forty-five percent of its total sales from alcohol. In simplest terms, this change would preserve the intent of the standard, which is to not permit new establishments that predominantly feature alcohol sales, while allowing for sales other than food to offset the sale of alcohol. The other components propose amending the land development code to permit accessory restaurants in additional commercial zoning districts, amending the definition of accessory restaurants to clarify that alcohol sales are not permitted at school cafeterias and similar uses, and amending the definition of accessory bar to allow them to operate in conjunction with additional uses beyond restaurants, which they are currently exclusively restricted to in the definition. The intent of the proposed changes is to provide additional options and flexibility for businesses in Lawrence. The changes were initially proposed in part as a response to the COVID pandemic and to allow business, businesses additional potential sources of revenue. The other broader intent is to address changes in the commercial and retail landscape. Further, the proposed changes refine and streamline the standards pertaining to alcohol sales by regulating the sale of alcohol directly. At their meeting on May twenty-sixth, the planning commission voted six to two to recommend approval of the proposed text amendment. A memo has been provided in your packet for this item, which contains some additional information and a summary of the scope of their conversation. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the proposed text amendment. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I see that the applicant, Dan Hughes, is here with us as well.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you. Kyle, um, I think we'll go ahead and have Dan, why don't you go ahead and make your comments and we'll direct questions, um, to both of you. Go ahead, Dan.
Sounds good. Thank you very much, uh, commissioners. My name is Dan Hughes with the Sunflower Outdoor and Bike Shop in downtown Lawrence. And, uh, I don't have much to add to what Kyle has already put forth, other than to kind of just illuminate the reason for our ask in this regard. Uh, from our perspective, um, retail is getting tougher and tougher and tougher with every passing day. And, uh, we're looking to have, uh, every tool in the toolbox available to sell, uh, experiences to our customers. Um, and, you know, for close to fifty years, Sunflower has been a fixture in the downtown community and during my thirty years there and twenty years of owning it, uh, I've always felt that we sold experiences more than we sold uh, actual goods. So, you know, the bike is the means to an end to the ride along the river trail or a pair of boots is uh, a means to the end of a hike around, uh, the George Latham hiking trail on, on West Clinton. Um, and so in the downtown master plan, uh, draft, there is a push for uh, more experience-based, uh, businesses downtown. And this is just another experience for us to sell. I know that when I go for a long bike ride or, um, a hike or go paddle my stand-up paddleboard somewhere, I want to finish that maybe with a, a beer at the end of the day, uh, to slake my trail thirst. But the current statute, as it, as it reads, obviously the accessory restaurant portion of it is one portion, but the fifty-five, forty-five, uh, requirement in, as it is now, uh, would require us to sell fifty-five percent food. And then the forty-five percent is everything else. It's the beer, which is tiny, but it's also the bikes and the boots and the service and everything else we do. And so getting over that threshold of fifty-five percent food to forty-five percent everything else is just not tenable, uh, for us and really anybody. Um, and I think it goes against the spirit of what the ordinance was put in place for, which is to prevent downtown Lawrence, uh, from becoming just overrun with pure play bars. And our concept is not a bar at all. We're at home in bed by nine o'clock. Um, we just want our retail sales not to be held against us, basically. Um, under the, the temporary, uh, rules, you know, the, the store has been operating the cafe since mid-August of last year, and we run that business on its own point-of-sale system. If you come in and want to buy an inner tube from us and a beer, that's two separate transactions. You have to buy the beer at the retail side. I'm sorry, to buy the beer in the cafe and the, um, the tube, the inner tube from our retail side of things. And thus far through those ten months, our alcohol-to-food sales percentages have been almost directly in line with what every other restaurant, um, in the downtown footprint is doing, which is about eighty-twenty. In our case, it's about eighty-five percent coffee and food, um, to fifteen percent beer. Um, when you layer in our retail sales, the alcohol portion of it, uh, goes down to less than two percent of what we do. So really what we're asking for here is the ability to sell a beer at the end of the day, but not let downtown Lawrence become overrun with bars. Um, and we feel like this is exactly what we need in the internet age to compete with things you can buy on Amazon. You can't buy experiences on Amazon. And this is, um, a, a necessary tool to help us do that.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you. Dan, commissioners, questions for either Kyle or, or Dan? Well, while we're thinking of questions, I'll go ahead and open it up to public comment. Um, if any member of the public would like to make a comment on this item, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature. And Sherry will call upon you.
Chris Flowers.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers and I just want to support, uh, letting him sell alka- alcohol. Just thank you.
Is there any other public comment on this item? If that's all the comment, Mayor.
Mayor Finkel, I thank you, Sherry. We'll bring you back to the commissioners for discussion. Mayor Finkel, I guess I can start and, and I'd say a couple of things. First of all, as I, as recall, when we, we made this temporary change, we got quite a few comments, at least more than we got tonight. But I, I think, um, I think seeing this in practice, um, you know, over the last year has, has shown us how, how it can work and should work. And, and obviously, Dan, you did a fine job with your cafe. Um, and, and I think it's been an attractive draw to downtown. And, you know, any negative someone could have imagined have not seen that. So certainly I, I support what you've done and, and I think I could see other businesses, um, you know, being able to have that same, as you said, experience type, um, um, draw to them. And as you said, we need to do all we can to support retail, not only in downtown, but, but across the city. And, and also, you know, personal services. I know that's in the accessory ball area and I could see this being a nice draw, um, you know, for certain personal services. And, uh, so I think this is a good change. I mean, I know many other communities have these sorts of, um, you know, it's been allowed, uh, in other communities. And, um, so I think we're following with the times here and I think it's a good change.
Commissioner Larson, I haven't seen anything, heard anything, or spoken with anybody who is, who, um, doesn't think this would be a good idea going forward. Um, obviously we're in a different age and, and time in business with the internet and that we need to, um, you know, give our, give our business time for this. Did I bug out?
Mayor Finkel, you bugged out for a second, but I think we got your gist that you're in support.
Commissioner Larson, thank you. Me and my internet's a little rough tonight. Thanks.
Mayor Finkel, other comments or motions?
Vice Mayor Shipley, unless, um, Commissioner Bowley wants to go, um. I, I guess I, 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 I feel like I heard, um, Dan say that it only amounted to, over the course of the year, two percent. And, and I, I won't lie, I find the descriptions of the percentages, um, unclear when I read them, even though I do know what they mean. Um, was there any feeling on the part of other commissioners or, um, staff about tinkering with those percentages or making it seem more clear, uh, to people who are wanting to do this? Um, you know, the forty-five, the fifty-five, you know, he, he, he really didn't, um, bring in anywhere close to those numbers. And even if I thought about, my hairdresser wants to have champagne. It's not even gonna touch that, those kinds of numbers. So I just wanted to see maybe if, if staff had any, if they fleshed that out a little bit, if, if they felt those could be figured with, or we feel like this is the, the, the safest place.
Kyle Kobe Planner, yeah, I think, um, uh, in determining the percentage that, that where, that is being proposed tonight, essentially it, it, this is the most direct and simplest way to update the code to permit the, the type of use and the, the type of combination of uses and sales that are being proposed. Um, I, I think going forward, you, the more data that we can collect as we move forward, maybe there is a different percentage that we find after several years that might work better, having calibrated it based on that. At, at this time, um, essentially what we're proposing to do is just to flip that requirement, though. Um, we did take a look at some of those other percentages, but we started running into some issues where we'd have to get really nitty-gritty into the code in terms of calibrating it. So we weren't inadvertently penalizing or making it more difficult for restaurants or, or other types of uses. Um, so I think for the time being, I think the most direct answer to your question is that flipping it to forty, no more than forty-five percent was the easiest, most direct way to do it.
Thank you, Kyle. Um, Mayor Vice Mayor Shipley, I do want to just check in because I did read here a little bit that there can be some, um, difficulties for reporting or for, I believe it's Sherry that ends up, um, getting these numbers. Um, I want to, I want to clarify that this, um, enables her, whomever, to get all the information, information they need. I, I do know that I get complaints on, uh, some businesses around downtown that no one thinks they're making, they're making. that no one thinks they're making their quotas. And I want to make sure that as long as we're talking about this, that we're using all the enforcement that we can and keeping an eye on that.
This is Sherry Redeman, City Clerk. So you're asking about the submittal of their statements. So the way we currently do this is they are, have to submit their liquor excise tax returns or copies of that, which shows their total gross sales and then their liquor sales. We enter that in for each month. So they are copies of the reports that they submit to the state. And we enter those in a spreadsheet that determines what the percentage of their sales are versus compared to their gross sales. We will be doing the same thing. And actually, this is probably a more accurate representation because when those sales are submitted, when they had to do 55% sales of food, we don't know what's food and what's a T-shirt or what's any other retail sales. To be, to be quite frank, we just know gross sales compared to liquor sales. I don't know if that answers your question.
Vice Mayor Shipley, I think so. Do you think this will actually help you get more accurate information, is what I heard you say?
I believe so, yes.
Mayor Finkley, other comments, emotions?
I'll make a motion. This is Commissioner Larson, and I move to approve text amendment TA 21-00094 to the City of Lawrence Land Development Code Articles 4, 5, and 17 pertaining to the regulation of alcohol sales and associated uses. Adopt this on first reading, ordinance number 9856.
Mr. Commissioner Bowley, second.
Mayor Finkley, we have a motion by Commissioner Lawson, a second by Commissioner Bowley. Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Aye.
Mayor Finkley, aye, passes forward to zero. Thank you very much, Kyle. Thank you, Dan. That brings us to commission items. Any commissioners have any commission items? I don't know if this, Craig, if you would plan to talk about this on your city manager's report, I know it's on the agenda, so maybe I'll bring it up now, which is maybe a discussion about our next meeting and going back in person on July. Not only have we been talking about that for a while, but there's some possible indication because of the expiration of the executive order, we'd have to go back in person, even if we weren't ready. But I don't know if you or Porter want to say anything about that in our next meeting?
City Manager Craig Owens, yeah, I think Porter and Sherry probably have the most current planning information on that.
This is Porter, our Neil Director of Communications Creative Resources. We have discussed this, and we are, we are prepared to go back in person with a Zoom hybrid as of the July 5th meeting. Is it 6? Sorry, I don't have a calendar in front of me, but as of that first July meeting.
Mayor Finkley, thank you, and, and I assume we'll, we'll issue some, a specific press release to the public at that, you know, before we get to that point, but that is our next meeting. And our intent is to be with some, with the commissioners present and a hybrid meeting going forward. So I thought that is worth noting. My only other commission item is I, you know, just wanted to thank Fox and Rec staff and, and all the hard work of Boy Madison getting our pool open. And I know folks are happy about that, and I know it's, we're still looking for lifeguards, but, you know, do you get that up and running? And I just read an article today about how there's quite a few cities who can't open their pool or are much reduced, even more than now reduced hours on the pool operation. So thank you for all the efforts to, to get that up and running. Other commission items? If not, takes us to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, City Manager Craig Owens, and thanks for the note on the pool, and we are still accepting applications. So if summer is already starting to get long for you and you'd like something to do, help out, we would love to have some additional help at the pool. So the other items to talk about on the city manager's report of the budget calendar, the, there is a new process under state law, a new notification procedure. We're abiding by that with our budget process. And we've, in, in your packets is a new budget calendar that makes sure that we comply with all of those process requirements. And also then, as usual, spend some time as a community, looking at the budget, presenting it, and some time in discussion for the city commission to, to work on the budget and get it right before adoption in, in the first part of September. So happy to answer any questions on that, but it's all printed there, and we will, of course, be communicating with the public so that they can participate. The rest are some of our regular reports that we do. The lot inventory report is there. Building permits, I do want to note that while we saw some really significant numbers that we previously reported on earlier in the spring, we've actually yet received higher levels. So we are seeing a lot of building permits, and that, that report should help you understand what kind of volume we have and what the staff is doing. And it's an excellent signal about the, the economy and the growth activity that we're seeing in our community, which is exciting to see. Other than that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mayor Finkley, any questions? This is a public hearing item. Any member of the public would like to make any comment on these five items in the city manager's report? Please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature, and Sherry will call upon you.
There's no comment on this item there.
Mayor Finkley, thank you, Sherry. Any commissioners have comments on the city manager's report? Make sure I ask that. If not, that brings us to the calendar. Any comments on the calendar? See none. That brings us to an adjournment, and we'll tell, make sure we let Commissioner Ananda know that when she's not here, we get done before 7:45. Just kidding. Okay, I look for a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Larson moved to adjourn, Commissioner Larson.
Commissioner Bowley, I'll second and look forward to seeing you all at City Hall.
Mayor Finkley, I agree with that as well. Motion by Commissioner Lawson, the second by Commissioner Bowley. Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shipley? Mayor Finkley, aye. With that, we are adjourned, and our next meeting will be July 6th at City Hall. So look forward to seeing you all then. Thank you.